And get started, do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has con- Nope.
The mo-
Go to 2.3.
2.3, the motion.
Oh, I move the school board, having been in closed session pursuant to a proper motion, come out of closed session.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye, we are out of closed, do we have a certification of our closed session?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23712.D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
We have a motion for certification, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye. Next, moving down our list, are our motions from closed session, do we have any motions from closed session?
I move to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
We have a motion in regards to the personnel agenda, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye, motion carries. Next up on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our student liaison for the month.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Sterling, audience, I have with me Mr. Matthew Owens-Curbaugh, a senior at Franklin High School. He's on the football team, cross-country team, soccer team, and is planning to go to Paul D. Camp Community College next year, and then after two years, transfer to a four-year university, am I right? Okay. And major in marine biology. He's gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is the approval of our agenda, do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye. Agenda is approved. Next up is roll call, Ms. Moore.
Rebecca Jessica.
Present.
Amy Phillips.
Present.
Dr. Andrew Martin.
Present.
Michelle Williams.
Present.
Jessica Graham-Mates. Andreas Shelton.
Present.
And Carrie Johnson.
Present. Now we are down to citizens' time, Ms. Moore, do we have anyone signed up for citizen time? We do not. So, moving right along, we'll move down to 3.1, action to approve minutes. We have minutes from our October 3rd and our October 17th meetings. Take a second to start with the October 3rd and review those. Do we have a motion in regards to the minute meetings from our October 3rd work session?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the school board work session for October 3rd, 2019.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye. That motion is approved. Next up are the minute meeting, the meeting minutes, I do it every time, from our October 17th meeting, we'll take a few minutes to take a look at those.
I move to approve the school board meeting minutes for Thursday, October 17th, 2019.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye, that motion carries. Next will be our superintendent's report, Dr. Sterling, I'll turn that over to you.
Excellent, thank you. First, for the November 4th, 2019 report, we'll start with good news that will be presented by Dr. Branch.
Good evening, school board chair, school board vice chair, school board, and Dr. Sterling, and our Franklin High School student liaison. I have good news with attendance updates from October 2019. Student attendance is still up, and we are very pleased to share that Franklin High School had 92.7% student attendance, JP King, Joseph P. King Jr. Middle School, 97.7%, and SP Morton Middle School, 95.2%. Therefore, the winner of the October 2019 student attendance is Joseph P. King Jr. Middle School. And for staff attendance, Franklin High School, 95.3%, Joseph P. King Jr. Middle School, 88.4%, and Samuel P. Morton Elementary School, 90.9%. Therefore, Franklin High School leads for October with 95.3%. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Next we'll have a report from our student liaison. The introduction will be presented by our board member, Ms. Carrie Johnson.
The student liaison for the month of November is Matthew Owens-Curbaugh. Matthew is a senior at Franklin High School, he is a member of Avid and FBLA. Matthew is the kicker for Franklin High School's varsity football team, and also participates in other extracurricular activities such as soccer and cross-country. After graduation, Matthew plans to attend Camp Community College for two years while playing for their soccer team. He then plans to attend a four-year university majoring in marine biology. Matthew?
Events at SP Morton Elementary School for the months of October and November. October, I mean, on Tuesday, November 12th, the Bright Stars classes visited the Suffolk Center for Culinary Arts in watching the performance Hansel and Gretel. On Friday, November 15th, a STEM van, a STEM van will complete a lesson for the second grade classes. Also on Friday, November 15th, the first PBIS celebration will be held to celebrate and recognize positive behavior. On Tuesday, November 19th, the first nine weeks awards, awards assembly will be held to recognize students. October 30th, through November 8th, third and fifth grade benchmark testing for reading, math, and science and history/BA studies. November 1st, second parent, second parent eat and read day. November 5th, picture day for students and staff. November 6th, job fair held at SP Morton. And November 7th, family Dairy Queen night. November 13th, report cards went home with parents and guardians during parents-teacher conference. November 16th, second annual community Thanksgiving dinner at SP Morton. November 19th, food line, family food line math night. November 19th, take your legislator to school day. And also November 19th, superintendent roundtable talk with parents/guardians and school community. And November 21st, new teacher academy. Events at JP King Middle School. Thirty students took pre-ACT on November 13th, 2019 at FHS. Nineteen geometry and eleven gifted students. Our third parent and parents as partners was a success. Healthy School Market sponsored by the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and the Eastern Shore on November 14th. Plus One PE and arts nine students were special, were special guests for the regional volleyball playoffs on Thursday, November 7th, 2019, and Monday, November 11th, 2019. Thank you, Mr. Phelps, for allowing the students to attend. JPK's Students of the Month, Rico Alexander, Amarian Cherry, Athena Hathen, Anaya Butts. JPK's October Teacher of the Month, Larry Gavel. Nerflecks Governor's Schools presentation was held Friday, November 1st, 2019 at 10:20, only the eighth graders. Benchmark scheduled October 23rd through November 1st, 2019 was very successful. Teachers versus students, the volleyball game benchmark celebration was held on November 8th, 2019. Wednesday's warm breakfast, Wednesday's warm breakfast was, was, has been a success, my bad. A division academic review went very well. Intermedia volleyball season. Also, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Lawrence, for a successful season. This season ended up as, ended up with a parent versus student volleyball games. Each of the students received a trophy. Students are, student enrollment is steadily increasing. JPK's Ladies of Distinction, National Junior Honor Society and Wolfpack Male Mentoring Group are collecting goods for our Thanksgiving baskets giveaway. Thanksgiving dinners for SCPS Saturday night, November 16th, 2019 at SP Morton. This will be served by National Junior Honor Society and Plus One PE and art students. JPK has also entered the Christmas parade for December 6th, 2019. Events at Franklin High School, months of October and November. English 11 students have completed, have completed the English 11 writing SOL. Avid and Upward Bound students participated in Camp Community College Student Leadership Conference program with an area, with the other area high schools. Culinary arts students participated in the market on Main Road outdoor dining experience. The Lions Club partnered with FHS, the nurse, Ms. Martin, for vision and hearing screening for all 10th graders. Pinkout Day and football game was on Friday, October 25th. Teachers and students wore pink to show support for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. FHS bands participated in an event held by McDonald's called Family Fund Day to celebrate the Grammy opening and receive a donation and free gift cards. Franklin Community Wall of Excellence Weekend has been held on October 25th and 26th. Five inductees were honored at the football game on October 25th and the introduction dinner at Cypher's Co. Country Club on October 26th. The third hall of FHS has been transformed into a haunted house by our theater students on October 26th and 27th. This was a fundraiser for the Vanguard and Theater. SAT prep was held on, was held in the library on Saturday, October 26th. We partnered with the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc., for this opportunity for our students. Students from Franklin High School and Southampton High School have participated. Students, teachers, and staff participated in the International Shakeout Day, also known as Earthquake Grill on October 28th. Vanguard students continued to participate in Virginia Placement Test Prep at Tywater Community College. Government students participated in voter registration day, or voter registration drive to make sure students have, were able to vote in time for the election on November 5th. Students enjoyed family-style dining at lunch on October 31st. The first nine weeks ended Friday, November 1st. All students took midterms and exams, report cards were distributed this week. FHS continues to partner monthly with the YMCA and other community organizations for the Life Skills Educational Program. Robotics team started their 2019-2020 robotic season on Saturday, November 2nd, at Heritage High School in Newport News to participate in the Rumble of the Roads competition. Advanced PE students took the, advanced PE students took, oh wow. Advanced PE students continue to benefit from our partnership with the YMCA and recently, recently completed their kayaking trip with Blackwater Alpha Hitters. Thank you to Franklin City Educational Foundation for sponsoring the trip. Many students have taken the SAT and ACT this fall. The cross-country team finished their season with, in the Region B meet in Danville on November 4th. The volleyball team finished their season with a 17-6 record and advanced to semifinals of the Region B tournament. The football team is in the Region B playoffs tomorrow night at Central Lunenburg High School. Kickoff is at 7 o'clock PM. Thank you to the band and cheerleaders for all your support. Thank you, school board, for the, for your continued support for our teachers and students.
Thank you very much.
Well, that was a lot, let's give them a hand, that was a lot. Thank you, Matthew, we really appreciate you serving as our school board liaison for the month of November. Next, we'll have a report for curriculum and instruction by Ms. Burkalter.
Good morning, good evening, school board chair, vice chair, school board members, Dr. Sterling, the staff. We want to give you Department of Instruction updates. We'll begin with Mr. Phelps for Franklin High School and proceed with Mrs. Thornton for Samuel P. Morton Elementary School.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
I thought I could scroll up. Franklin High School participated in the voter registration drive day on September the 24th. And actually, we did a lot leading up to September 24th, but September 24th was the big day where Ms. Rose Parker, former government teacher at Franklin High School, and a community, very involved in the community, partnered with our government teacher currently, Mr. Glenn Muller. And in the cafeteria, we registered, or we filled out the paperwork for students to get registered to vote that we're gonna turn 18, already the, had turned 18, or we're gonna be 18 by November the 5th. So that was a success, you can see the posters the students made and put all over the school in government class. They made the posters in government class, and they set up a table in the cafeteria, and with Ms. Parker's and Mr. Muller's leadership, we got approximately 20, 15 to 20 students registered to vote. A lot of them were already registered through DMV when they got their license and, but we made sure they were registered and we got an additional 15 to 20 registered. So that was on September 24th. That's right, I have two studs, I forget. So you can see the collaboration that took place with our government students. So we had student involvement, we also had collaboration with the community with Ms. Rose Parker and the AKA Sorority. I was looking for Ms. Edman about there somewhere. And Dr. Sterling, I'm sorry. And I knew if I started calling out names, I'd miss it. But um-
Thank you so much.
They were instrumental. And the Gaddis department, Ms. L. Massenberg was running around figuring out who was gonna be 18 by November 5th. And so, we didn't just wait for them to come to the table to us, we went and found the ones who were too shy to come forward and got them all registered to vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Phillips, Dr. Hall-Lenard, Vice Chairman, Superintendent, Dr. Sterling, board members, and colleagues. I will be presenting, will briefly discussing slides that Mr. Warren, our principal that is absent today, had shared at the previous meeting. Our advanced reading class in 5th grade is progressing, doing well. They took their benchmark on last week, and those students, we, those students are doing well with that. In addition, our math, we have our advanced math class, that is our group of students. They are 5th graders taking 6th grade math. Those students, I, they took their benchmark, and I would like to celebrate. We had 100% pass rate with those 21 students. Those students are really pressing along, doing an excellent job. That is it, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we had shared the dates with you last week for the academic review division-wide at each school. Today, we actually concluded, so we had all three schools this week. Today, all three schools received the minutes from those meetings and their next steps to follow through. Any questions?
Well, could you elaborate for transparency for those at home that cannot read the slide?
Absolutely. So on Tuesday, Joseph P. King Middle School held their division-wide academic review. It was very positive, very successful, they had all of their evidence for teacher products, student products. They also presented their quarter-one benchmark data, which is trending upward, and they're in alignment with where they were for their data last year, or they are higher. Yeah, I think those are the highlights from Joseph P. King Middle School. For Samuel P. Morton Elementary School, that was held yesterday. They also had all of their teacher products, student products. They presented their quarter-one benchmark data. And then we dug a little deeper with Samuel Morton with the gap group for special education, because as you know, they were in the, they fell in the red for that last year, and we continue with that. So Mrs. Edman actually looked to see where modifications were held, how they were in alignment with the IEP goals in addition to the SOL goals. Those are the highlights from the elementary school. And then for Franklin High School, today, we conducted theirs. Of course, Dr. Sterling had to tell Mr. Phelps to put his little toolkit away with evidence. He presented the high school, you know, they're on the, for about four, so they're in year one right now. They presented their quarter-one and quarter-two benchmark data. Teacher products, student products, and then as well, because they were in optional academic review last year, we dug a little deeper with them and also looked at the co-teaching model for the special education students, the progress they were making with that. One of their next steps is to just push a little bit more with allowing more planning time for the general education teacher and the special education teacher to collaborate. And they have also set up next steps for Ms. Ricks and Mrs. Edman to continue professional development there.
Great.
Okay, and so, I'm not quite sure, Ms. Burkalter, you always do an excellent job.
Well, thank you, Dr. Hall-Lenard.
And I'm almost kinda hesitant sometimes to ask some, some questions. But the reports and you all's work as a team of administrators for all, for, and your administrators from all three schools always give a stellar report.
Yes.
However, with Samuel P. Morton Elementary School, we know what the data says.
Absolutely.
And so, for me, as a board member, it is a concern, and I'm sure as it is Dr. Sterling's concern and the division's concern, to make sure that we are accredited, all three schools accredited, and to make sure that none of our schools are at that Level 3. Okay? So I'm looking, I'm referring, so I pulled, I wanted to go back and revisit the school, I believe it's school quality profiles.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so my, my question tonight is, what are we doing differently? And I went back in my notes to try to look back when Franklin City Schools were, we were under the memorandum of understanding. And we are just, we're thrilled that we are no longer under a memorandum of understanding, that's a wonderful thing. However, my question to you and your staff this evening is, what are we doing as a division to make sure that we are not, that we don't have any of the areas in red? And previously, I recall, Dr. Sterling, you and Dr. Geiger created the grid with that red, yellow, and green.
Yes, so, Dr. Hall-Lenard, that was a very compact question, and I have all the answers for it, so let me make sure I address it. So I'll start backwards with the traffic stoplight. So all three principals actually did that approximately 45 days ago, we do have that. During the academic review, we actually revisited those to make sure that the goals were realistic, that we were trending towards the goal, and that they were carrying out their action steps. So we are continuing to work with that. Next, at Samuel P. Morton, actually, we had an extension of the academic review meeting. So after we held the academic review, we actually stayed behind to discuss what we could do differently, looking at the school, well, not looking at, but actually reflecting on the school quality profile. And so, we looked at staffing, we looked at where we were with the quarter benchmark data, and we looked at what we could do differently. So, science, we know, is one of the indicators where we have to make growth. So, we actually have put in place effective yesterday a co-teaching model in that class where there's actually two teachers to work with, two student groups at a time. In addition to that, we have redone the pacing, Mrs. Thornton actually finalized that yesterday, the pacing, we've readjusted that and added in the lesson plans and the, any activities aligned with that from the VDOE website. In addition to that, Mrs. Thornton created a PLC schedule. So the science teachers actually get a triple dose of professional development moving forward. They get one-to-one with Mrs. Thornton and/or myself once a week. They also meet with Mrs. Marilyn Lawrence at the middle school once a week. And then, they meet with their grade level and have professional development facilitated by one of the specialism coaches. So those are just a few of the new things in addition to what we were already doing, that we're doing to monitor that.
And I want to just take it a little bit deeper, because you, you're saying everything. But even with the traffic light, everything we're doing is aligned to the school improvement goals. But the board members will receive the traffic light from, you know, the red, green, and yellow for all of the indicators. So yesterday, we had the specialist there, that was Ms. Cox and Ms. Blaine. So we're not only looking at JP King, that's just, excuse me, not JP King, even though we're looking at them as well, SP Morton. We're not just looking at their reading scores, passing rate as a whole. We're pulling out, is it red, green, or yellow for African-American subgroups? Is it red, green, and yellow for girls? Where are our students with disabilities? So we are really drilling down, and they're actually creating that form next week. So when I present the data to you, you won't get a lot of numbers next time. You will get numbers correlated to, if this was our school profile today,
Yes.
this is what it would look like. So that was worked out. So that was worked out. I'm proud to say that was led by, um, Doc, um, I'm, I'm speaking it, to Ms. Burke-Halter. And we asked that all three schools do that. But I know right now it was JP King and SP Morton, those were the ones that we were focusing on with the traffic light.
Yes, but all three schools, actually, and they presented that data to us with their subgroups. Mr. Parker and his team added in the students with disability subgroup into their data and presented that yesterday, day before yesterday, on Tuesday, and Mr. Phelps actually drilled down on his and presented it in his data today as well with his benchmarks.
I so appreciate that.
You're welcome. And we did have prepared for you to present last week, but Dr. Sterling felt like we would have been there until midnight. So Mrs. Moore actually pulled it out and the principals can tell you, we were a little frustrated because, yeah, because we had put a lot together, but we have a lot to give you, so.
So you will bring that to the board, I'm assuming, at our work session?
At your work session.
Yes.
And you will create this grid so we will be able, you probably have already created it, so that we can see it.
Absolutely.
And that we are able to track the progress.
Absolutely.
At all three schools, especially Samuel P. Morton.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
That, that has been my concern, to make sure that we were on it. Typically, when you come, you come forth to give your presentations, they're always stellar. And sometimes I kind of pull just a little bit, I'm trying to get a little bit more information. Because I know you're probably doing more than you're actually getting, actually telling.
Absolutely, the schools do and because they're in it every day and we hear it consistently weekly.
Right.
Because the principals also come to meet every other week with myself and/or Dr. Sterling, depending on her schedule. And so they constantly are monitoring their goals because they have to present the evidence within their folders. So everything is circling and looping around.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You've answered my questions. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely, anytime.
Principals, is there anything you want to elaborate on? Because I don't want to leave out any of your work.
VPI update. So I had provided to you last week the dates that we've met, where we are and the biggest outcome from all of the meetings thus far this week is Mark Allen at the Virginia Department of Education had let us, he had notified us that we did not, we were not on the monitoring schedule for this year. We were supposed to follow the action steps from last year and implement those, and we had three overarching to implement. One was to adopt the curriculum, which we did, Stream and Three. The second one was to provide professional development on them, on it, which we did in the spring of 2019. And then they did a refresher training on the implementation of the curriculum at the beginning of the school year. So we have met the second action step. And the third one is to conduct the steering committee and have it three times a year and we'll have that first meeting next month. And we actually received an email, Dr. Sterling and myself today, saying the VPI SSWS report was accepted and no further action is needed at this time.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Would like to hear that.
We do too.
Let me ask you now, go back to, you said the steering committee, is that the, your, your Bright Start advisory or is that a separate committee?
So, um, to get bang for our buck, because the Bright Starts Advisory Committee pretty much meets every month. We're going to take three of those meetings and make it the advisory and invite the teachers and the parents and some of our community partners.
Yeah.
Do you mind if we have Ms. Thornton come up and discuss how we're accelerating the learning for VPI in the meeting that you just conducted yesterday?
Absolutely.
Sure, would appreciate that.
Because we want to hear about how we're adding value to our children.
Yes.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
So our Stream and Three curriculum is very extensive that meets the needs of our students. However, we want to make sure that we add as much value and have as much concrete evidence that our students are exceeding and having everything that they need to, when they move forward to kindergarten, whether it be here in Franklin City Public Schools or wherever they venture from Bright Start. Yesterday, the team met in collaboration with Dr. Sterling and we revised their schedule to incorporate time for additional skills, to include skill building, those things that are not necessarily in the curriculum, that would include like the using scissors, because those are the things that have to be taught. In addition to, skills that include word work, where the students will be using, will be exposed to three-letter words, they will go up on the word wall, those students will have those words to practice at home and in cla, in the classroom as well. In addition to that, time has been allotted within that schedule to allow for the instructional assistants to help with the teachers gathering those materials. Because we know when it comes to Bright Starts four-year, four-year-old students, they have to have time to cut out and prepare those materials, what sorts and all things of that. So we are really pushing that Stream and Three curriculum, thanks to OBSC. In addition, we've added more things to make sure that our students are beyond ready at the end of this school year. Any questions?
I think they also added a math focus.
Yes.
For the students.
I apologize, yes. And I will say, I went into a classroom today to do an observation and I saw one of the teachers, they had a map, they had centers out, because now our centers are more focused on literacy, not just housekeeping and those things, they're focused on literacy. So when I went into one of the classrooms today, the teacher, she had her charts out and the student had to, with manipulatives, of course, they had to identify the number, then they had to put down the number of tiles or the number of objects that correlated with that number. And I got up from my observation and I went over and said, "Well, baby, tell me what this is." And the students, I visited two students, they could tell me what that number was and then I had them go back and count. So our kids are really working and pushing in. Any questions?
Well, so you are also, I believe, working with the, the preschool initiative locally with Weston Tidewater Smart Beginnings. Can you tell us how you're collaborating?
Smart Beginnings, Mrs. Whitehead has come in and we have, you know, with Bright Starts, they have four parent meetings that we have to have. Mrs. Whitehead came in and she led that first meeting in October. The turnout wasn't what we anticipated, but for those that were there, she led a meeting on brain, the brain activities.
All right, let me ask you, pause right there. When you say the turnout, were you targeting parents, educators, who were you targeting?
Parents. The parents of those Bright Starts students.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes. She did a professional development, a meeting on brain development and just making the parents aware of everything that goes on with a four-year-old. And it was a, for the parents that were there, they were very receptive, but again, our turnout wasn't what we had hoped. But for those that were there, they did get valuable information that I know they found, they were very grateful to receive.
Okay. So then the Bright Starts Advisory Committee is going to really work towards increasing, I'm assuming, the parent engagement.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions?
Mrs. Thornton, we just want to thank you for all you've done. And Dr. Sterling is over there, so I hate to even not acknowledge her because unfortunately, when she digs her heels into something, and right now she has dug her heels, her heels into Bright Start and she is running, Mrs. Thornton ragged, like the hair is ready to come off her head. But Mrs. Thornton is so gracious and humble that she is rolling right along with Mrs. Sterling, Dr. Sterling, and I am so happy because, you know, we can't do everything, I can't do everything, and she's just tickle pink because every day, oh, I have to go over there, oh, where's my new schedule? Oh, well, let me go over there to her PLC and I'm like, oh gosh, I'll be texting Mrs. Sterling, I know she's on the way. So she walked this deep, deeper like you right now, Dr. Hall Leonard, and I know you have to.
That's nearing near to my heart, yes it is.
So she would really go her to that or even more, but just thank you, Mrs. Whitehead.
Well, we appreciate Dr. Sterling and her vision for our students.
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all.
Mrs. Thornton. Mrs. Thornton.
I, I just, I wanted to say, something that caught my ear was that you're working with them on skills that they need, such as using scissors and whatnot. And I can remember probably about fourteen years ago, a friend of mine who, her first year in teaching kindergarten, had allotted twenty minutes for an activity for cutting out a letter. And she was so frustrated at the end of that day, she was almost to tears and she was just like, I spent more time than that with them, like how to hold scissors, she's like, I, I didn't know. And we forget sometimes that they, if they haven't used those when they were younger, like if you come from a household and you do crafts with your kids and when they're two and three years old, they know how to use glue, they've already put their hands in it, they've already smeared it and tried to eat it and everything else like that, or they've already tried to use scissors and they're familiar with that. But if you, if you have a group of children who've never had that opportunity to play with those things and use those things, like crayons or markers or glue or scissors, they need that time to investigate it and play with it. So using that time in the Bright Starts classroom, when they get to the upper grades and they're, and they're doing those things, then those teachers don't have to take that time from the classroom. So it, it's not just benefiting them then, but in, in the higher grades, when those teachers can spend more time on, you know, the academic lessons that they're cutting their swords out for and the kids can do more of the cutting that you're talking about, the teachers and the assistants having to do. So all the way around, it's just that ripple effect. So I'm glad that you all are paying attention to those sorts of things as well. So thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
In your motor skills, is tying shoes and buckling part of that?
Honestly, we have not discussed that, but it is something that we will bring, because that is an issue. That is something that, you know, I see them all day with their little shoes untied. So that is something that we will definitely look into with our PLCs. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thornton.
Thank you.
Um, last week, I provided you the update on the New Teacher Academy. We have our next meeting on November twenty-first. And as of this week, we have solidified our list and all billing paperwork with Camp Community and we'll start that payment process with them. Any questions with New Teacher Academy? And last, we'll have Mr. Phelps come up, but last week, we had presented the Adult and Continuing Education Programs at Franklin High School on behalf of Ms. Adisi Cole because she had knee surgery. She's still recovering, so she could not be here tonight, but we wanted you to have an opportunity to ask Mr. Phelps any questions on the program information we provided to you last week. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Well, Mr. Phelps, that was the quickest speech I've heard.
Quick, quick, quick. Thank you so much for that. Next, we're going to go ahead on and move onto our Division Financial Report. Ms. Kendra?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Before you, tonight and for the public, we have our 2021 Budget Calendar and I just want to highlight a few of the items that have already taken place and some things that are going to take place in the near future. The first item is the pre-budget kickoff meeting that took place on Wednesday, October the twenty-third, and that was between the City of Franklin's Finance Department and Leadership and the Franklin City Public Schools Leadership. The next item is the Budget Kickoff Meeting that took place on October the twenty-eighth, and that presentation is the one that Ms. Moore is scrolling through right now, and that is available on Board Docs for the public and the school board had the opportunity to review it on last thirty, Thursday at its work session. The next item that I would like to highlight for you all is the budget survey that was released for the public's input on Tuesday, November the fifth. And if anyone has not had the opportunity to go ahead and take that survey, we ask that you do that because your input is very important to us and we need it to move forward in our budget process. The next item that, and that budget survey is scheduled to close on Tuesday, November the nineteenth. So again, I urge anyone to go ahead and take that survey to provide us with your input so that we can make sure that your concerns are heard. And also, on Thursday, December the fifth, which is something that's very important, it's a joint budget work session, it's the first of several to take place between the Franklin City School Division and also the Franklin City Finance Department again and their leadership. And that is scheduled for, again, Thursday, December the fifth.
The time for that meeting is not listed here?
At this time, the time has not been scheduled, but that information will be forthcoming. We'll make that available to both the board and the public so that we can have attendance at that meeting as well. And that is all that I have for the Division Financial Report. I thank you so very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Kendra?
All right. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the Audit and Financial Management System Update. Mr. Ryder?
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Sterling. The audit continues, continues, it continued after October sixteenth, when the auditors returned from their, completing their tax returns. The last day of fieldwork was November eighth. So, and today, they sent over a preliminary draft of financials that will be going into the city's financials, but it was just highlighting the schools, but those aren't ready for publication because it's just a draft right now. As at this time, we have no more documents to supply to the auditors and the next thing is for them to issue their report in draft form. So then we'll, we'll read the draft form and then the city will approve it and then it'll be finalized and printed up. The software, so the Alio software, we took a field trip to Suffolk, Suffolk School System, where they have been using this for five or six years. It was a very productive meeting and we, we learned an awful lot and the, the game plan right now is to try to bring our general ledger and our accounts payable modules up by June, by, by June thirty, which would be our year end, fiscal year end. So we would, we, you know, try to get that up and running to throw the switch on July first. And then, and it's quite common for anyone who's put this stuff in that the human resources and payroll coincide with the calendar year, so that would have a January first, you know, throw the switch. But other than that, everything, you know, everything that the Alio folks told us, the Suffolk people reinforced that it's, it's quite, it's quite good. It's, it's a highly electronic system, very, very little paper involved. And then, there's one more thing. Oh, that's it? No? So, I thought there was another thing. So I did receive, we received a letter, it's the same letter we got last year, but the dollar amount was different. The Cafeteria Fund had a surplus and the state of Virginia does not allow, does not like full school divisions to have more than three months of fund balance at, at June thirtieth. So the fund balance bounces all over, but at June thirtieth, they want you to have that, a plan spent, to spend that down to get within a three-month supply of fund balance. And that will be, that is due to the VDOE by December thirteenth, so at the December twelfth board meeting, we'll bring you that.
I did have a question. If we could back up to audit status. It stays here, the only item left for Franklin City Public Schools is the auditors want to inspect the Title I transactions which have been ready. So have we submitted the Title I transactions to the auditor?
Yes, they were scheduled to come out November seventh, but they canceled, they came out on November eighth and we handed them a milk crate, all of the transactions for the prior year, and she actually returned them that day.
Okay. So on the eighth, they actually got them?
Right.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Dr. Branch who will review Human Resource and Administrative Services.
Good evening again.
Good evening again.
During the work session, you were presented twenty-four Virginia School Board Association policies for your first reading. I ask now if you have any questions?
So I believe the recommended action, you wanted a motion tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Looking for approval.
Do we have a motion in regards to the VDOE policy updates that were presented to us for review? Do we have a motion in regards to the VDOE policy updates that were presented to us for review?
I move to approve the VSBA policy updates as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Thank you.
That motion passes.
Next up are some provisional licensure updates. Under superintendent's goal to recruit and retain quality teachers and staff, I'd like to update you that there are eleven, eleven provisionally licensed teachers, seven of which are on track to complete licensure requirements by June twenty twenty. We are meeting with them one-on-one and ensuring that they are following processes and taking classes and assessments to complete their licensure. And lastly, on Wednesday, Sep- November the sixth, two thousand nineteen, we hosted a support staff job fair, which was held in the morning from eight-thirty to ten-thirty a.m. at S.P. Morton and from two p.m. to four p.m. at Franklin High School. In total, we had seventeen candidates come in to apply for different support positions, such as cafeteria staff, custodian, teacher assistants, and substitutes. And we are daily collecting the final pieces of their packets to move them on to possible employment. Are there any questions?
No, no questions. I thought that was an excellent idea. But observation, Dr. Sterling, I'm noticing how you see here, Dr. Branch, you have tied this, this is human resources and administration. It is tied directly to the superintendent's goal. I noticed that. Okay, so the other areas, Dr. Sterling, my question is, can we also, when they, when you have your cabinet present, can they also tie it directly to? So it remind us that the superintendent is actually working towards achieving that particular goal. So that was an observation. That's, that's on point. I have to give you all credit for that.
Dr. Sterling did, did, um, give us that guidance. That is a Dr. Sterling directive.
That is a directive.
That all of the slides have the goals.
Have the goals.
So as we move forward, you will see all of the slides will be tied to the goals that were, uh, presented to you.
Yes.
And you will also see from each school, their goals tied to their presentation. So again, thank you, Dr. Branch, for making certain that this, um, presentation was, um, presented exactly how I envisioned. So we will make certain that from now until the end of the year, they're all tied in.
Yes. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Um, uh, before you sit down, I want to, um, go back to the eleven provisionally licensed teachers. Um, Dr. Branch just, um, again, came on board this year. However, we started the process of sitting and reviewing, um, the teachers' plans last year. But this year, I feel under her leadership that we have had, Ma- and Ms. Gartner, of course, a lot of progress with our teachers actually taking classes. Um, we have a three, the state gives us three years for a teacher to become licensed. But our goal to accelerate the learning in all areas, I would say that, um, working with Dr. Branch, we have these seven teachers on track at least a year or two before their license is to expire. So that is, um, um, there, I just commend you on your dedication and support of meeting with them monthly, registering them for the classes, making certain that the classes are paid, checking to see that they've completed the classes, and registering them again. So, um, it has made all the difference of getting our, our teachers certified at least two years again before their license expires. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Next, we're gonna move on to Community Engagement and Special Programs. Community Engagement and Special Programs, we're excited to announce once again that, um, you are invited. I'm gonna go back to that, but I'm gonna just do this slide first. Is that okay? Okay. You are invited to the Franklin City Public Schools Everyone Annual Community Thanksgiving Dinner. Of course, this is, um, put on for the second year. It will be at Samuel P. Morton from two to five, hosted by the Franklin City Public Schools. Um, last year, again, our school board members served. You greeted community members. You've, uh, gave, uh, supported Mount Olive with distributing food, um, to, um, our, um, community. Please, um, come on out because this year, I think, um, we have targeted approximately four hundred, Ms. Moore, is that confirmed? Four hundred, um, people to attend this event. And, um, we have at least a hundred to, about volunteers, actually, between the kids and community partners. And we have community partners that are their first time partnering with Franklin City Public Schools. And we're pleased to, um, announce that. And it's a fun, it's a fun day. It's a fun day. Next, we polled the board for a proposal to the school board for Franklin City Public School for a calendar change. Recommendation to change the date of the parent-teacher conference to Wednesday, November thirteenth. Rationale to allow early release for faculty and staff to begin Thanksgiving holiday. The faculty and staff were polled at all three schools and the consensus was that the dates be changed from Wednesday, November, from Monday, November twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, early release for students, faculty, staff, and students to November, for not to have an early release till Wednesday, November thirteenth, twenty nineteen, to have an early release and report card pickup for parents, teachers, conference, and two hours after school. I'm gonna have to read that again to make certain that that's clear. Currently, Wednesday, November thirteenth, twenty nineteen, report card distribution to all schools. Proposed change, Wednesday, November thirteenth, twenty nineteen, report card pickup with an addition, parent-teacher conference, two hours afterwards. Currently, we have Monday, November twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, early release for students, teachers, workday parent-teacher conference. Proposed change, that Monday, November twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, early release for students, faculty, staff, and all FCPS offices. And I will need a formal approval on those changes, please.
All right. I'll ask for the motion first and then we can have discussion. Um, do we have a motion in regards to the calendar change?
I move to approve the proposed, uh, calendar change that has been submitted.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes. I'm not opposed to allowing, um, the, the teachers out for, um, early release, but I, I am opposed to the short notice that was given. Um, I, a- as a working parent, I can't just get off that soon to make a parent-teacher conference the next day. Um, and I, I did hear back from others that had some issues with it being, um, the very next day and the call not coming out until late in the afternoon, um, evening hours for that. Um, also, we, we have a calendar committee and we approve the calendar early in the year. Um, so it's my understanding that people get to review the calendar and this had been on the calendar for some time. And perhaps if this is an issue, then maybe in the future, we can set the date to be another time. Um, I just wish it, if we were going to change it this late in the game, then perhaps we would have picked a date maybe next week so that it would have given, um, parents and even some teachers who may not have planned on staying back the next day, um, those extra hours, a, a little bit more time to make some arrangements.
So you're referring to, Ms. Johnson, the proposed change for that Wednesday, November thirteenth?
Right, because the decision was made so late on Tuesday.
Superintendent Sterling, what, what, what were the comments from some of your staff or parents?
Um, we had, um, majority say that the changes were fine. Um, but I do agree because of the short notice, but I had to get the polling from the teachers. And you're right, this really was kind of an oversight from the calendar committee because it didn't make, didn't flow, even with the teachers. So that is definitely a point taken. And we will look into making certain that we can make this change of the next, uh, proposed calendar for twenty twenty-one.
Did the teachers bring it to you, your staff?
They brought it to the principals.
To the principals?
Yes. The principals polled their staff.
Okay.
And then the principals give us the green light that their team was on board. Um, all three schools had the majority of their faculty there, but still, it could have happened. You could have had five or ten teachers not be able to attend.
Right.
But, uh, you're exactly right. But, um, with them polling them and giving the principals the green light, the majority of all of our, our team was there.
Okay.
At all three schools.
Any other questions?
But we have to do better. We will do better. We will do better.
I only had one concern and that was, um, and of course, this is from being a parent in the division as well as a board member, um, that we not jumped the gun on it because there was a reverse nine-one-one that went out notifying parents of the change prior to it ever being presented. That was a concern for me, um, that there was, it was taken and run with before we as a board had ever had a discussion. Um, or that there had been a polling of the board. Um, and I feel like that's just overstepping a little bit from that side before we'd ever even had a chance to even hear about it. So I, I just would say as a word of caution in the future, we need to be a little bit more mindful of that. And because if we had voted or we had polled and said no, then we'd have to backpedal. And that would look worse.
We have to really look into that. Um, and I do give a formal apology. Um, however, we never try to jump the gun on anything, um, especially when we have a board that we serve, that I have a board that I serve. So, um, thank you for that. We'll look at, uh, whatever happened with our logistics. Um, but I never try to give the green light until I receive word from the board. But, um, I, again, I openly and formally apologize for that.
I have a question. When, uh, was the board polled?
I received an email, uh, at about a quarter to four in the afternoon of Tuesday.
Was the email sent at a quarter to four or you retrieved the email at a quarter to four?
It stated three twenty-four p.m. is what it was said.
Three twenty-four, when the email was sent?
Right.
Okay. So when did the call go out? Cause I'm trying to see, did that call go out before? Do we know that the call actually went out before the board, the email was sent?
I received the call, the reverse nine-one-one prior to.
I received one.
Prior to three twenty-four?
Eleven oh three.
And I received mine from Franklin High School, um, or from whomever, um, that evening, actually. So it was probably around six. Mm-hmm. Yes.
How did you get it that morning?
I don't know. And I actually still have the voicemail because I let it go to voicemail. It was at, excuse me, let me back that up. It was at eleven fifty-one was when the voicemail came in.
Because I didn't receive one that morning. You didn't receive one that morning? So that's the reason I questioned that. I understand all of the discussion. I think we can all appreciate it, but not everybody received the call that some people received in the morning. I didn't receive it until later.
I received it at six oh three p.m.
Yes, I received it later.
Well, that has to be something in Power School because even with the, um, the one-hour delay, some parents received it and some parents did not. So we had to send out
That is correct.
Another letter saying that if your information isn't updated in Power School, then we need to make certain that that happens. And that's why I sent it out again because, um, it has to be a glitch or something in Power School.
Okay.
But, um, this is good discussion because
Yes, it is good discussion. Cause see, I wouldn't have known that, that some people received the call earlier because I did not.
And I, this was, this was actually my first time hearing it from that particular reverse nine-one-one about the, um, parent-teacher conference. I didn't, I didn't hear anything that some people didn't receive it until just now. So that is, but I did respond because I did hear about the, um, the morning hours. That some people receiving calls and some people are not. Uh, Moore, can you call? When did we send that, um, email out about the poll? Cause I was under the impression that went out before lunchtime.
What did you, did you check it just?
On it before. And I'm looking at my, um,
It's timestamped in my inbox. It's three twenty-four p.m.
Was it that late? Okay. Okay.
You called her before three o'clock?
And I advised, um, Ms. Moore to put, that we needed to poll the board, that it needed to be a consensus at the board.
Okay. So it was a, and so I'm assuming that when you put this, when you drafted this, Dr. Sterling, it was the consensus of the board
Yes.
After being polled
Yes.
When you drafted this.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And I even checked again before I came into this meeting and we've confirmed.
To make sure that all boards were polled.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussions?
Um, 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 I'm a little bit in the, it's foggy to me. I saw the email, but I wasn't aware that it was a poll. I thought it was sent as a matter of information.
Oh, okay.
What does it say? Does it say it was a poll?
It didn't, it, it basically stated that November in preparation for the Thanksgiving holiday, it was Dr. Sterling's desire to allow staff to release after. So basically, it's not sa- it's not asking for approval. It's just saying change in calendar.
The second paragraph.
Requesting your position.
Mm-hmm. Requesting your position. Uh, moving forward. Okay. I wasn't aware that it was a poll. And because a lot of times where my office is, my phone doesn't download. And so I might just look at it quickly and just see a portion of it.
So you probably appreciate a call. That may be the best.
But I may, I may not even
But you may not get the call?
I may not get the call either.
Okay. Got you.
But even in the subject line, action needed or response, you know, needed would be helpful because I too sometimes, if I'm very busy, I see it pass by and I think I'll go back and check on it later.
Check it later. Okay.
Cause it, the title was change in calendar.
Right.
I mean, that could have been, you know.
Got it. Okay.
So yeah, if it's urgent, if it's identified as urgent would be useful.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a very good suggestion, moving forward. Any other discussion?
So moving forward, it, the board should have had a consensus before it went out to the parents. And then before it went out to the actual schools, it should have come to the board first. And then the next step would have been the principals and the parents.
Correct.
Or the principals and the staff and the parents. Okay. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Would you, what, what are you saying, Mrs. Moore? Yeah, and I, we need you to say that because see, for transparency, we are, since the camera is rolling. So the board was polled and how many people?
We have four to say yes. And so whenever, um, we polled, I polled the board on behalf of superintendent, I don't move forward until I have four confirmed, yes, you asked. I agree to move forward. And then that's even with field trips or anything.
Because we could say no, that I would like more information.
And sometimes if it's time sensitive, I'll even call each one of you to say, I sent out an email about a poll. Would you please respond?
So four is considered a majority? Okay.
So there, there was, was suggestions that I do feel will be beneficial as we move forward. Even though we had a correct amount to move forward, urgent, please respond in the subject line.
Yes.
And even if you're unable to, um, have some type of signal, And even if you are unable to have some type of signal, because we're polling the board, I think a follow-up phone call should be also given. Even if we, we can't get you, you'll at least hear a voicemail that we attempted. So there's still some, even though we are in alignment, we can still do better.
Yes, that is correct.
Not a problem.
All right, any other discussion? We have a motion in a second before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 Nay.
And aye.
Thank you. Next, we had the roundtable discussion with Superintendent Sterling on Tuesday, November 19th. This is something that I do at all three schools. We're starting at Samuel P. Morton Elementary School. This is a flyer that went home to all of the parents. At the bottom, you will see the focus, the Superintendent Dr. Sterling will be available to speak with parents and stakeholders concerning, concerning hot topics at S.P. Morton. Topics will include academic expectations, attendance, dress code, behavior prevention, as well as academic intervention services. These are just some of the topics, but a parent can bring anything that they would like to the roundtable discussion.
If I can just highlight that you have also included stakeholders in this. So if there are, there's anyone within the community that has questions, this is an excellent opportunity to bend your ear and have that discussion. And if they have questions that they were looking for answers to, it's an excellent time to present them as well.
Absolutely. And you'll have a reverse 911 for this one as well, that goes out to all of our stakeholders. And Ms. Moore also uses the Southampton Chamber of Commerce email list. And we provide them a copy of everything that we do as well.
That's awesome.
Dr. Sterling, have you considered, and this may be later, not necessarily between November and December, having a later time for those families who may be working? I noticed this was the morning, from 8:00 to 9:00 AM, and there may be community stakeholders that are working. Will you do something similar later, maybe January, February sometime?
I have not had the opportunity to do something later. But I can schedule that for the spring, absolutely.
Yes, okay.
So we'll do something in the morning for parents, and we'll come back and do something later in the evening. That's not a problem. That's an excellent idea. Next, we have the professional development log for your review. As you can see, we are constantly attending professional development to develop our practice. So you can look at that as your, at your leisure. This is for the month of October. And also events that we've attended. Next, you'll have the field trip log. FHS and JP King, S.P. Morton, all of them are on the field trip log. And as you can see, we're starting our Bright Start, so for October 31st, Bright Start's community field trips. They went to the Dardens Country Store, where they look at different products. And they touch the fruit and different, how you pay your money.
Pay your rent.
Yes, they do it all. So we're, we're just very excited about getting them out and about to meet the postmaster and the grocery store. They go to a field trip at least once or twice a month for our Bright Starts. Vanguard TCC engineering students are going to the actual campus during the day and in the evenings, getting ready for their placement exam. So everything when our students are, everything that entails our students being off campus, we want you to know about it. So we put, even if it's not an overnight, we put it in our field trip log for your review. In case you have any questions. And right now, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sterling.
I had one other thing, Dr. Sterling. I'm not sure which area, as far as your, with your staff. I believe we talked recently, in the last couple of months, and you helped me in reference to children of trauma. How we were going to try to make sure that our staff, so I don't know, that may be under your plans for professional development, or how you are implementing that. We've talked about making, ensuring that our staff, they're sensitive to the needs of children, and it may be preschool children that have been traumatized in some way.
Well, that is a form of our professional development for the year, and we are starting with our Bright Start students. There actually is an instrument that measures trauma and resilience. So we're looking at that right now. So I'm actually planting seeds. So everything you hear academically, I'm just planting seeds to start beginning that work with our Bright Start teachers and our counselors, to look at the trauma levels of our students. And as you all know as board members, poverty is an indicator for trauma as well. So when you're dealing with that, and you're dealing with students that are living below the poverty line, like Alice, and that's that acronym for, for families that are working, but they're still below the poverty line. We look at our children and the correlation to their academic learning and their abilities and how they learn. So yes, you'll hear a lot more about that in the coming months.
Thank you.
And you'll also see the instrument that we're going to utilize to measure trauma.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Dr. Sterling, I have information to, that I'd like to forward to you about children in trauma as well.
Would love to have it. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, moving next, upcoming events. Of course, this Saturday, November 16th, is the community Thanksgiving dinner from 2:00 to 5:00. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend, so my fellow board members, I hope those that do attend will let me know how it goes. I'm sure it's going to be phenomenal. And I hate that I will not be there. But what's not on the calendar is our students that participated in Pathways program this summer. Those that are seniors were invited to an invitation-only fall visitation this weekend. And those that are going up this weekend, if they got their applications into Virginia Tech by November 1st, they will find out if they were admitted this weekend or not. So it's going to be a big weekend for some of our kids. On Tuesday, November 19th, Dr. Sterling, as she just previously mentioned, has her roundtable discussion at 8:00 AM at S.P. Morton. Tuesday, we have designated as Take Your Legislator to School Day. Ms. Moore, have we had any response? So we are still on hold with that. We did have Delegate Rosalyn Tyler did reach out to us and say that she was unavailable that day, but she would like to come do a walkthrough of the division at some point. So we will be reaching out to her to try to get that scheduled soon. S.P. Morton Food Line Math Night was mentioned as well. That's on the 19th. Next week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the board will be at the VSBA Annual Convention in Williamsburg. And then the following week will be our Week of Thanksgiving. A reminder, it's a early dismissal day on Monday, and then the division will be closed the remainder of the week. No, two things that are not up there that will occur before our next meeting. Well, one thing that will occur before our next meeting. Wednesday, December 4th, is the annual pre-legislative eggs and issues. That will be held that Wednesday. I would assume we will have students going.
Like we did last year, yes.
Like we did last year. Ms. Moore, if we are interested in attending, can we reach out to you? And then, of course, December 5th is DQ Fun Night. That is also our usual regularly scheduled work session. And that is when we're looking at that first joint budget session with city council.
Yes.
Reminder as well, back reiterating what Ms. Kindred said earlier to the public. Go out to our website. The budget survey is out there. That is very important to our division so that we know what, as stakeholders within our division, you are interested in us looking at for our budget. What are those budget priorities? So please, 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 if you have not, take the time to go out and fill out that survey. Anything else that's not on the calendar that anyone wants to share as far as calendar items? All right, moving next, we have the Charles Street Gym. We had a brief discussion on this during our work session. For those that are not aware, prior to the organization of our board as it currently is, about five years ago, the process was started to have the Charles Street Gymnasium declared a historical landmark. It kind of died down for a couple of years. And the persons that have been handling that, Clyde Parker, and I think there was a couple of other people that have had a hand in that as well, have started back up on that process. And that is supposed to be decisioned at a meeting by the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Historic Resources on Thursday, December the 12th. At that meeting, what will happen is it will go one of two ways. Either they will deem it a historical landmark, or they will continue it to a future meeting. And here at another meeting. At this point, it's thought that it is going to be deemed a historical landmark. Once that is done, that does open up some resources as far as funding for the preservation of the building. Once it is declared a historical landmark, that does not hinder our use of the facility. We can still use the facility. We still can use it in the manner we're using it now. That's not, it's not going to change any of that. It does, however, come into play if there's any, anything done to the structure, so the whole of the building. There are criteria that has to be met because of the historical designation. So that may mean when there are things that are done, for instance, right now, there are some busted-out windows that will need to be replaced. Then it will have to meet those specifications designated by the Department of Historic Resources. We can't just go and replace a window or go and just put a glass glass in it. It has to meet whatever the designations are and the criteria are. So I just wanted to make the board aware that this was going on. There is still a small leak in the roof, which per our Building and Grounds Committee meeting, they are still working with the contractor to ascertain where and get it fixed, because it is still under warranty. So that is coming at no expense to us, them looking into that. The maintenance department has been doing some cleanup in the building. The back part of the building has been used for storage for quite some time. Not quite sure what, because it's under lock and key, so we're not quite sure what's in there for safety reasons. But that's okay. And currently, the inside of the building is being utilized by our wrestling team and our robotics team. They pretty much split the building, and that's what the building itself is being used for. So moving forward, one thing that we need to think about as a board is what our commitment is to the building itself. Because when we get into looking at maintenance of the building and repairs to the building, it may, in the long run, while there are resources freed up, it may require some money on our end as well, outside of just, like I said, slapping glass in a window. So that's something long-term that we're going to have to think about moving forward. I just wanted to put this on the board's radar, since there had been a discussion about it. And like I said, the designation does not inhibit our use. Pretty much what the designation is saying is that from the appearance of the building, we have to maintain the appearance of the building as its historical significance. Inside the building, we can do what we want to do as far as use. Think of it, has anybody been in the incubator? The Franklin Business Center? That used to be the old buggy factory, and they've maintained the outward facade of the building. But if you go in, it's not, of course, it doesn't look like it did when it was a buggy, buggy factory. They have modernized it on the inside. It's essentially along that lines of what we can do with the building as well. Any questions for me on that?
Not a question, just a statement. If it is made a historical site, then aren't there grant opportunities for restoration?
There are, there are. I've been in the building a few times in the last few weeks. And Ms. Jester was in, on a meeting that we had with Mr. Parker in regards to this. Back, most, some of you may remember, back when we went through the roof replacement on it the last year, year before last. When we started that process, there was a structural integrity.
Study.
Study, thank you. Done. And the building is deemed structurally sound, that it's in good structural state. But if you actually go in and look at the building, for instance, where the roof has leaked inside the main part of the gym, which is on the front side of the building, and the, as you're facing the back of the building, it's in the front right-hand corner. The roof had to be torn out because of the leak. And then, of course, where it had leaked, the original wood flooring had to be torn out as well. Back in the back part, the concrete, because it's a concrete bottom roof, that's starting to fall in in some areas. Where the, where the main building has leaked, the inside of the building is tiled with old tile. And because of that leak, it's deteriorated the grout between the tiles. So when we get into looking at repairing things like that, it wouldn't be as simple as, oh, let's go in and tear all the tiles out and just throw something, a sheet rock or something up on the wall. It, it would mean that we have to do repairs to maintain the historical significance of the building. Which, like I said, comes at a cost, but you are correct. There are grant opportunities that come up now. How much that grant may cover of what that cost would be and how much we would need would remain to be seen. Because I, of course, have no insight on that. But yes, it does. It does open up some grant opportunities. And it's a beautiful building. It's structurally, with the, the architecture, the historical architecture. It's a beautiful building. And I guess come, probably by our next regular board meeting, we should, from Mr. Parker, have some indication as to whether they went ahead and approved it, or whether they've tabled it and moved it to a future meeting.
This is at the Thursday, December 12th. Will anybody be attending?
Mr. Parker said he would be attending.
Is he?
Mm-hmm.
Which Mr. Parker?
Clyde Parker. The gentleman that's heading up this project.
Right, that's why I wanted to make that clear. Because we have a.
Yes, not Mr. Darren Parker, Mr. Clyde Parker.
Yes.
And that, that, that gym, for anyone that doesn't understand the historical significance to the city of Franklin, that gym was built when Franklin was still part of Southampton County. It was built in 1936. So they actually built that gym in the height of the Depression. And there, according to, if I remember correctly what Mr. Parker said, there are no gyms in the state of Virginia that have the architecture that that gym has. So that is the Charles Street Gym.
I did have other business by the board.
That was next. That was next, so please feel free to go ahead.
Okay, I'm not sure if, maybe I've missed the discussion, but we received an email in reference to the VSBA Conference for VSBA Delegate Assembly, and you know that our board receives one vote. And the chairman typically serves as a delegate, the vice chairman as the alternate. So I'm assuming, Madam Chairman, because I don't recall us discussing this, so had you planned to poll the board as to our position? We get one vote.
I will. They actually just updated the delegate packet last week. And I have not had an opportunity yet this week to pull it, to pull the new packet to look at the changes that were made in it. But I will send that out, I will forward that out to all board members tomorrow, and poll you for your position, um, as to whether you agree with the position of VSBA on those items, or if you disagree. And if you'll just get those back to me by Wednesday, that way I know how to represent my board.
Okay, may I have clarity on what you're talking about?
VSBA, um, as part of their annual convention, have a delegate assembly, where each school board has a delegate that represents them, that go into this assembly, and they, they review the, VSBA's position on items that are coming up before the legislator, legislature. And by this delegate assembly, the de, the delegates from each school board that attend the assembly have a vote in what VSBA's position is on these items.
And make that clear, when you say the delegate that attends, that is the vote of the board.
Correct.
So the delegate cannot go in and cast their vote on what they think, Ms. Shelton. The delegate has to talk to the board, the school board, to get the school board's per, position. And then they cast a vote on the position of the board.
Okay. And, and usually, VSBA has a recommended position, um, on each item. We may not be in agreement. I'm not always personally in agreement, but whether I'm personally in agreement or not is irrelevant depending on what the board's position is. So if my position is the same as the board, then we're, then I'm good. If not, then my, my goal is to do what the board, the board's position is. So I'll get those sent out, I'll get the delegate packet sent out tomorrow to everyone, and if everyone could just let me know by Wednesday what their position is. I will vote accordingly. And this is a new venture for me too, so I, apparently I get a, a little thing with a button on it to make my vote, so. So we'll figure that one out. Anything else?
I just want to say, I enjoyed serving hot chocolate with my comrade, Dr. Branch, in 20-degree weather.
Well, it wasn't, and it wasn't excellent, it was.
We didn't get to enjoy the game, though. We were busy serving hot chocolate.
Madam Chairman, I move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, and we have a second, we have a second. Any, any discussion? All those in favor can signify by saying aye, and if others has to stay.
Aye, aye.